Uh, well, guys, uh, Will and I are gonna kinda co-host this thing this morning, but uh, I'll start out with, uh, you know Pastor's been taking us through the Great Commission. And uh, you know Pastor always says, everything in the Bible flows to the Great Commission, from the Great Commission, through the Great Commission, and by the Great Commission. I'm gonna say that again. Everything in the Bible flows to the Great Commission, from the Great Commission, through the Great Commission, and by the Great Commission. Now, Matthew twenty-eight sixteen through twenty is the Great Commission. Would somebody uh, open their Bible and read that for us, please? Matthew twenty-eight sixteen through twenty.
I got you, I got you, I got you, I got you, John.
I'm gonna say when Pastor K's not here, uh, y'all gonna have to start bringing your Bibles, because I don't know how to put it up on the screen like he does. He, he's ahead of me technology-wise, in a lot of other ways.
Okay, I got it done. I'm gonna read out my discovery Bible. And it reads, "But the eleven disciples proceeded to Galilee, to the mountain which Jesus had designated. And when they saw him, they worshiped him, but some were doubtful. And Jesus came up and spoke to them, saying, All the things has been given to me in heaven and on earth. Go down there and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, teaching them to observe all that I commanded you, and lo, I will with you always, even to the end of days."
Thank you, Will. Appreciate that. Um. As we review, um, remember, uh, questions always guide us to how deep and how wide we go. And uh, what do you see in these verses? Let's start with uh, what uh, what makes this, what makes this particular appearance special? This uh, this particular appearance of Christ, what makes it different from some of the others that we've read about?
The fact that it was tree arranged.
Exactly, yes. Uh, it was uh, it was uh, "The eleven disciples proceeded to Galilee, to the mountain which Jesus had designated." Uh, it goes also on to say that uh, when they worshipped him, uh, but some were doubtful. Does anybody, uh, as, and this is where Pastor was leading us last week, why were, why were some doubtful? What, what would they be doubtful of?
Well, they doubted that it was Jesus himself?
Well, uh, that, and why would they, why would they be, uh, uh, I'm not so sure that they doubted it was Jesus himself, because he had appeared uh, prior to this, uh, three other times. So the disciples knew that he had risen, but uh, it had something to do with the kingdom.
Oh, because, wa- wa- were they not expecting their king, kings to die?
Well, they were expecting uh, Christ to uh, pretty much replace the current kingdom, and they were expecting the kingdom to come on earth. They were expecting uh, at the point of the kingdom to come, was the Romans would be gone, the Jews would be in power. Uh, just like when James and John were arguing over who was gonna sit at his right hand and who's at his left hand, uh, they had not fully comprehended of what Christ had been telling them, you know, because he told them forthright that, you know, we're going to Jerusalem, I'm gonna be handed over to the Gentiles. Uh, I'll be uh, crucified, dead, and then I'll rise on the third day. But uh, and of course, we all find it interesting, that's why couldn't somebody understand that, but you just have to, I, I don't think the uh, disciples or any of the other followers of Christ at that time completely understood that, uh, what type of kingdom uh, Christ was talking about. A- and that's gonna kinda lead us into today's study, uh, which is gonna take us back into Mark, which we talked, you know, we taught a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we missed it, but this being Resurrection Sunday, it's an ideal time to review some of that. Uh, let's talk a, just a minute about the uh, triumphal entry. Would somebody go to Matthew eleven? And read uh, in chapter, chapter eleven, the triumphal entry, and starting with verse uh, seven, and read verse seven through the uh, through eleven. Mark eleven, chapter seven through eleven.
I, I got you, John. Once again, I'm reading out of the discovery Bible.
Okay.
"And as these was going away, Jesus began to speak." Oh, what'd you say, Matthew, right? Yeah, that's.
Yeah, uh, no, Mark, Mark eleven.
Ma- ma- okay, I'm in the wrong book, sorry. Mark eleven.
Chapter seven to eleven.
Mark eleven, chapter seven, right?
Right, seven to eleven.
Mark eleven, seven to eleven, okay, got you. "And they brought the coat to Jesus." We there now?
We're there now, yep.
Okay. "And they brought the coat to Jesus, and put the garment on it, and he set up on it. And many spread their garment, garments in the road, and others spread leafy branches, which they had cut from the field. And those who went before and those who followed after was crying out, Hosanna! Blessed is he who comes in the name of the Lord. Blessed is the coming kingdom of our Father David, Hosanna, in the highest. And he enters Jerusalem and came into the temple, and after looking all around, he departed to Bethany, with the choir, since it was already late."
Okay, isn't it interesting that uh, here we have uh, the Jewish nation celebrating the arrival of their king? And uh, in order to understand today's teaching, uh, this triumphal entry actually parallels in the Gentile world, in the Roman world, the imperial triumph. Where the uh, where the, you know, where the, like the Caesars or the victorious uh, Caesar would come riding into town with his uh, prisoners, with his uh, the loot he'd uh, taken in battle, and some of the mighty men, and they would, uh, the people would hail him as the king. So, that's kind of the uh, so, as we see Christ riding in on a lolly donkey, instead of on a big white horse, or a big white mule, and uh, flashing all of his uh, wealth and all the stuff that he just uh, accumulated from some battle somewhere. Uh, we have Christ coming in, and it, and which is kind of a, a hint of a, of a different type of kingdom right there. Because as we, the gospel of Caesar, remember Caesar was called Lord and God. And he had a gospel. You know, the gospel means good news. Uh, we as Christians, uh, many, many people think that that's the Christians coined the term gospel, but the gospel was around a long, long time before Christ uh, came, uh, before Christ was born. And the good news uh, of a Caesar was called the Golden Age, or uh, Era Pacus, and it was on four pillars. Does anybody remember the four pillars? Uh, the uh, Roman uh, Golden Age, the gospel that we discussed?
One of them was entertainment.
Well, no, that was the uh, yes, okay, so, go, go with the, go with that. What were the four pillars of the, uh, of that gospel? Go ahead. So entertainment?
Healthcare.
Education.
Healthcare, education, entertainment, and what was the last one?
Sports, athletics.
Right, competition. Very good, Cornelius, thank you. So, the uh, the Era Pacus was uh, piety, which was the worship of their false gods, war, victory, and Roman peace. So, it's so diametrically opposed to what Christ taught as the Son of God, and what he taught his peo- uh, he taught us as his disciples, you know, uh, one, you know, we don't worship false gods. Uh, two, we don't find our pleasure in war, victory, and the Roman peace. The Roman peace, uh, this was Caesar's way of bringing the gospel, was the Roman peace. So, uh, so what happens when the Jew comes walking into a Roman colony where Caesar is Lord and God? You know, like uh, Paul did. When you come in and you proclaim Jesus as Lord, do you think that would cause some friction with uh, with the place that, where everybody says that Caesar is Lord and God?
Well, I think that'll be a reason to get your head cut off.
Yeah, yeah, to put it bluntly, that's exactly what happens. Uh, so as we, uh, if we proceed, uh, the Rabbi and the uh, Jewish teaching method is by discovery. Uh, you remember our, our six rules and five questions? Does anybody uh, does anybody know uh, what the six rules for study are? I'll help y'all out. Uh, the first one is, you read through the text entirely, the pretext and the posttext. You write out the verse, location, address, and translation. Uh, number three is you write down what stands out. Number four, when you rewrite it, you only use God's words. And from what you just wrote down, what stood out? You write down what questions you would ask God, and what you wrote down that stood out. And then the sixth rule is investigate the scripture using Bible resources and experienced teachers, which is uh, what we've had to do this morning in order to shed light on Mark's uh, rendition of the crucifixion. And then, those are the six rules for study. And uh, next, what are the, what are the five questions? Anybody remember what the five questions are? All right, uh, I'll say this, just so we'll have them on the recording. Uh, question one is, what have I learned about God? Uh, there are no such things as a coincidence with God. Uh, number two, what have I learned about people? Uh.
See if I can get one up, John.
Okay.
Uh, uh, one of the questions is, how will I apply this to my life? And uh, I believe another one of the questions is, uh, who else can I share or teach what I've learned today with?
That's right. Uh, who can I call and share with what I've learned today? So we have uh, what have I learned about God? What have I learned about people? And as a, uh, on a side, you know, uh, we haven't got the highest regard for God, we, we look to men, but uh, what have we learned about people? You know, always, uh, when that question pops to my mind, you just understand you really can't depend on men. Uh, what have I learned that I can apply? You know, all things happen for the glory of God. Uh, number four, what have I learned from the text that can help someone else? And then Fred, as you just said, who can I call and share what I've learned today? So, uh, in review, those are just, uh, we've been taught that many, many times. I just thought I would uh, run through those quickly. Because remember, the Rabbi taught through discovery. The Jews uh, liked to treasure hunt. They enjoyed uh, finding the mystery in the teaching. Whereas the Romans, uh, they just wanted to, somebody hurt and tell me what it means. And that's kinda where, uh, and when I say Romans, of course, that's the, the Western church, that's, that's us. That's certainly people in America. And uh, as we uh, slow down, and we begin to ask these questions, we become more and more like uh, folks in the Jewish culture, that we're able to dig much deeper and to discover much more uh, valuable insights into God's Word. So, what do we have to do? We have to ask better questions. And uh, and have to apply them to our lives. So let's go into uh, the main part of our study today. And by the way, guys, if y'all have any questions, or if I'm not making myself clear, please, you know, don't hesitate to interrupt. You know, that's just the way we roll. I don't have to, I'm not preaching, I'm just trying to uh, walk us through this thing and facilitate our time together. So let's look at uh, Mark's Gospel. So.
But that said, John, but that, with that said, with that said, John, I'm gonna jump in and ask you a question, please.
Okay.
And it's, it's so good to see, it's so good to see everybody. Uh, Ms. Linda, Leslie, Hola, Hola, and uh, uh, Curtis. And uh, I, I hope to hear everybody's voice today, you know, and anything else named, I think, oh, good to see all of y'all. And uh, I'm just asking about, that's the gift of you and each. Now, John, my question is this. Uh, you said the Rabbi taught through discovery, okay? And the Jews, the Jews taught through discovery, and the Romans, uh, it was more like, just tell me, tell me. So you tell me this, why did the Jewish rabbis teach through discovery? Why didn't they like to hide the truth and make the tell me find it? Can you elaborate on that just a little bit for me, please?
Uh, I will, and of course, I, uh, Sue can help me out here, because I've heard him uh, tell this, give this answer before, but if you uh, if you discover it yourself, that truth belongs to you. If I just tell you something, uh, you, you know, you're, you might remember it for a little while, uh, but if you're driving down the road not taking notes, it's just gonna go in one ear and out the other. But if you discover that truth for yourself, uh, much the same way of the study we're gonna do today. That happened because years ago, uh, Casey uh, taught me this, or I mean, I heard the teaching on it, and then it was years later, in a Friday morning call, I heard him uh, ask this question. In fact, uh, Tyler was there, one of Sue's disciples, he was on the call with us, and we were talking about the Great Commission. And Casey uh, left, always leaves us with a cliffhanger, and he said, uh, what did they doubt? You know, that, it said, and some doubted, and Casey said, what did they doubt? And what did they doubt? Does anybody remember what they doubted? They doubted the kingship of Christ. And uh, Casey left us with, what did they doubt? But he taught me something that he had led me to discover many years ago, and that's when I dug this stuff out and got to talking with, next thing you know, he's, he's like Sue, he had me wanting to share it with everybody. So uh, that's the difference between discovery and just telling somebody something, Rick. You just have to, uh, when you find out yourself, you remember it. Does everybody agree with that? Anybody have any thing they'd like to add to that?
Well, well, John, I, I agree with you completely, right? Because when we looking at this uh, text, the things that God do is, 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 is very different from the way we think. Right? I mean, it's so complete. The way God answered prayers is totally different from the way that we might think that he would answer prayers, right? Because when he made, as, as we discussing today, the way he was making Jesus king was kinda like totally different, because the people was mocking him by, by, by making him king, like, you know, giving him the the royal robe and everything and the crown. So, 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 I'm learning that, like you say, uh, uh, the way God answered prayers and the way God do things is totally, I see, totally different from our a way that we would do things. And I'm discovering in that, you know? Uh, in every, and in my whole walk of life, that God answered prayer, you got to be willing and, and, and just realize that God is soft. And realize that God know what he doing, that God is in control of the world. He have not lost control of the world, you know? Uh, that's my takeaway on that, John.
That's good, and you're correct. Uh, the scriptures tells us that uh, his ways are not our ways. Sue, come on, Sue.
I, I'm wondering too, you know, Jesus always came on and said, you've heard it said, but I say, you've heard it said, but I say. And given proper interpretation of texts, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if they had lived in kingdoms so long. Let me see. Something, I don't know, this. Hello, y'all, is still there?
We're still here. We hear you, we got you.
Yeah, you Sue.
All right. That they had lived in empire so long by being under the empire's rule, I'm wondering if they even had a hard time differentiating kingdom from empire themselves. Um, and, and why that might have looked so foreign to them in how Jesus was living our kingdom, and what kingdom they were expecting, right? And so, I, I was, I don't know how this translate, but I was in my backyard yesterday, and I heard some kids playing out front in the yard. And as they were playing, they were making sirens sounds, you know, ambulance, police. They were making those kinda sounds as they were. And I said, well, in the, in the country, country kids make sounds of animals, birds, and cows, and horses, and stuff like that. And I'm wondering if their environment had a big role on the way they even saw kingdom, because it lived under that kind of rule so long. I just, just the thought.
Well, and to uh, follow up on that, Sue, you know, when uh, Christ told them that uh, you know, that you're slaves, you know, the Pharisees came back and said, you know, uh, when, when were we slaves? You know, we're sons of Abraham, uh, something like to paraphrase it. So they'd been in uh, bondage so long that they'd come to, you know, the leaders had just kind of accepted that, and and became, I mean, even thought everything was just cool, you know, I mean, we're fine, we're not under, you know, we're not slaves, we're children of Abraham. So, uh, yeah, it's just like those kids making siren sounds. They've been in the city so long, they've never heard a cow moo or a horse uh, whinny. All they've heard are the amulets and gunshots and police.
Yeah, and then, you know, some of the uh, Jewish leaders and some of the people had uh, began to profit, began to profit off their own people in that, in empire, right? In that empire. And then you had the, what you would call the Orthodox Jews, who were um, who didn't like the hellishness Jews, who had began to adopt uh, athletics, uh, the educational system, the, and all those four pillars. And that's what caused that big issue in the feeding of the people in acts, uh, the hellishness against the uh, I just call them Orthodox, I guess that's the best way to put it. And uh, so I think you had all that in the mix of things too, that may have hindered the the paradigm of what true biblical kingdom was, John, possibly.
Yes, and that's uh, and, and I love the term empire. Empire was what uh, the Romans fought for. In fact, that goes all the way back to uh, as I was trying to find something to, uh, in October third of forty-two B.C., Octavian uh, uh, becomes Lord, he self-proclaimed Lord and God. Because at that time, Caesar and uh, I, I mean Octavian and Mark Antony, you know, if y'all have ever watched Cleopatra, you know, Octavian and Mark Antony wanted to maintain the Republic. Uh, but uh, Caesar, uh, let's see, um, let's see, O- Octavian and Mark Antony wanted empire. They wanted a uh, uh, they wanted to be the emperor. And yet, uh, the Republic wanted to remain in place. You know, Republic is where you have elected officials. Back in the, when Rome was originally formed, after they got rid of their kings, they became a republic, which is what our United States government was modeled after, where we have elected officials go and make decisions for the rest of us. And uh, it worked great for a while, because they only allowed the elected people, the senators, to go in, and it was for one year, and then they rolled over and they had to put somebody else in there. Well, you know, as time went on, uh, just like Sue said, even in the church, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that there's some churches today that are making bank on the backs of the people, and you know, it's not really, um, it's not pure Christianity. Come on, Sue.
Yeah, you can, you, I think we could also go all the way back to Egypt, right? Because uh, well, let's go all the way back to Saul. Uh, God never really desired the people to have a king, right? Not a human king. He wanted to be their king the whole time, but they, they're the ones that petitioned for a king. He says, okay. And all the kingships have been, some of them have been good, some of them were really tainted. But they, but none of them were ever truly modeled, um, I don't think what God wanted modeled from the beginning. And then they got in Egypt, and, and as Moses was leading them out, and they got to the Red Sea, then they started holling about, man, in Egypt, we, we had good food, we had good house and all this stuff. So they even wanted to revert back and, and was thinking empire almost was better than following God's way and what God would provide kinda thing. So, that thing's been embedded in the people for quite a while.
You know, Sue, and uh, just hearing you say that, uh, you know, it just so, uh, the older I get, you know, the uh, by the way, um, Will, pretty soon you'll be as old as I am, if you're gonna hit seventy-one. So, but what happens is, you realize that all the things, I mean, when you become a student and you really read that word and begin to ask questions and dig into it, and, and do the the uh, you know, the five questions and the six methods of Bible study, you realize that, you know, the more things change, uh, the more things stay the same. I mean, when, you know, Samuel was offended because the people wanted a king. And God said, Samuel, what are you complaining about? He said, this ain't your show. He said, they're, they're rejecting me, not you. And then when he said, we're gonna get him a king, but here, I want you to tell him that he's gonna take, he's gonna, they're gonna pay taxes, they're gonna send their uh, kids to work in his fields, they're gonna send their daughters to, you know, live in his harem. And you know, just all kind, I mean, he told us all the downside, and yet they still clamored for it, and they got what they asked for. And you know, as I look here two thousand years later, you know, nothing's really changed. It just depends on, you know, what form of government it could get, you know, we think it's bad, it could get a whole lot worse, but um, that's, that's all in God's will. But as we move on to uh, just discuss Mark here, and what I wanted to do was uh, bring to your attention, you know, Mark is a Roman gospel. Uh, Mark is uh, it's a short uh, staccato, just a fast firing gospel. Uh, I told y'all last time when I was, uh, as I read through Mark, what really jumps out at me is the word immediately. I mean, he just uses that word immediately, uh, just several times, you know, just, he just constantly keeps Christ on the move. So, Mark's Gospel is significantly different than Matthew's. You know, the main difference between the two is Mark's audience. You know, Matthew was a Jew, he was writing to the Jews. And Mark is a Jew who writes a gospel to the Roman culture. And of course, this is gonna shape the message and the agenda more than anything else, or. Or is that, do y'all understand where I'm going with that? Does that make sense? Uh, the first thing that a reader notices about Mark is the pace that I just talked about. You know, Mark is much shorter. He carries a much faster pace through the gospel. Romans or just to say Americans, let's talk about me. Uh, let's personalize this thing. You know, Romans are, uh, Westerners. And we like to be entertained. You know, they're not Easterners who value a treasure hunt buried in the text or an experience or expectation that that you'd want to work your way through a tough question in order to unearth amazing truths. Now, if you think I'm, uh, just stop and think a minute. I mean, how long did we spend on Luke six forty? On that North Louisiana call, guys. I mean, some of you, uh, ladies weren't on, that's a men's call, but I mean, gosh, you know, we were on that thing for years.
Two years.
Yeah. I mean, uh, you know, why? Because, uh, we were unearthing amazing truths. You know, the Romans, Americans, me, you know, I want you to get to the point and, uh, tickle my fancy. You know, so Mark, he's writing a gospel. It's fast paced. It's just a fast paced tale of all the things Jesus did. He bounces from one story to another story. And he just keeps the characters moving and he keeps Jesus busy. Are y'all? So that's the difference between Mark and Matthew, just the audience. So Mark also plays on the value system of the Western culture. You know, the Greco-Roman culture was built on four pillars of Hellenistic life. Let's go through those one more time. What's the four pillars of the Hellenistic life? Cornelius? All right.
Hello, Cornelius.
Okay, Will, give me one.
Well, uh, we've got, uh, healthcare, athletic, education and entertainment.
There you go. There you go. So that's the four pillars of the Greco-Roman culture, which translates into our Western, our American culture. I mean, what do we, you know, right now we got March Madness going on, you know? I mean, there's people, uh, I don't know if they're playing basketball this morning, but there's probably people that didn't go to church this morning because they want to catch their favorite team, see if they're in the final four or not. You know, you got healthcare. Oh my God, you know, the billions we spend on healthcare, entertainment. I don't even want to go there. And then, uh, competition. Now, if you pay attention to the stories that Mark chooses to tell and, and the way he chooses to tell them, you begin to notice that Jesus is being portrayed as quite an impressive character. I mean, he's a master teacher. Which pillar does that cover?
Education.
There you go. And he's an incredible healer of all kinds. I mean, of all kinds of conditions. You know, the man can, you know, he can touch the leper. He can heal the, you know, he can make the blind see, the lame man walk. Uh, which, which pillar does that cover?
Healthcare.
All right. And what about entertainment? I mean, how many people did he feed? Twice, he fed five thousand people. I mean, he drew vast crowds. They were constantly amazed. I mean, there would be people run to see him that didn't even know what they were looking for. So that's the fourth pillar. He, he was, he looked at him as quite an entertainer. And, uh, well, actually that was the third pillar. And then the fourth is better than any other man being offered for consideration. Now, consideration for what? For the king, for the Lord and Savior. You know, for any other man being offered for consideration, uh, who other than Christ? You know, other than Caesar, you know, who was already calling himself Lord and God, you know, uh, the early Christians, you know, it was Christ Kyrios. Uh, Kyrios is a Greek, uh, word and it means a person exercising absolute ownership rights. Uh, Lord. He's supremely, yes.
Oh, well, can I get those four? Cause I'm trying to see which one did athletics fall under?
Okay, uh, uh, well, it fell under competition. Uh, you know, the, as a competitor for the right to be called Lord and Savior. That's the competition. That's the competition. I'm sorry, Fred. I didn't catch that question at first, but that's, uh, does that help you?
Clear now. I'm clear.
He, he would wear, I think, uh, tell me if I'm wrong by saying it this way, brother John. But he would wear the victor's crown like in Rome, the, the Olympics. You had the Olympics and you had those kind of competitions. And, and, uh, had a whole lot to do with the emperor and all that kind of stuff, but he would be crowned king of king and lord of lords.
Yes. Yes. It's, it's almost like, uh, if you saw that movie Gladiator, you know, when old watch his name down there and everybody's loving him more than loving the emperor. And as a result of that, they had to take him out. You know, the emperor went through all kinds of gyrations to kill this guy and make him look like he was inferior to him as Caesar. Because he, you know, I mean, these guys were, you know, they were pretty high on themselves. I mean, that Caesar, he wasn't to be trifled with. I mean, they really thought they were a lord and a god, just like, uh, just like Pharaoh did back in the Egyptian days. So, uh, Mark plays on the value system of the Roman culture. And, uh, and, you know, there's a, a, a great reason that many prefer the gospel of Mark, uh, in short, because Americans are Westerners, we're Romans. Uh, we're all cut from the same cloth. And it's for the very same reasons we enjoy the shorter, faster, more entertaining gospel of Mark. Uh, but Mark has an agenda. Mark has an agenda and it's much deeper than simply entertaining his readers. And he starts to head down this main path towards the end of his gospel. So, uh, one of the many differences that you can find in the gospel of Mark appears during the telling of the crucifixion story. And today, resurrection Sunday, what's more apropos than the telling of the crucifixion story? So, um, you know, any, uh, astute, you know, which is a big word, just anybody that's paying attention, uh, may notice that the gospel of Mark, uh, in the gospel of Mark, Jesus has offered wine mixed with myrrh before he's on the cross. In every other gospel, he's offered vinegar mixed with gall, both before and on the cross. And it seems like a minor detail. Or if you're a, you know, critical Bible scholar, that's a big one. That's where you can try to discredit the Bible. But in fact, uh, Mark is doing something much deeper under the surface. And in order to explain this, um, what I'd like to do, uh, with your help and your questions, I'd like to describe the coronation of a Roman Caesar. And, um, uh, this was a work, uh, uh, I heard this to, uh, from Ray Vanderland, who uh, got it from Thomas Schmidt and then actually Marty Solomon with, uh, the Beamer, um, podcast, he picked up on it. I mean, it's just a fabulous study. It goes back to using reliable sources. And this is where, uh, Kuechse's teaching led me. And this is, remember this all goes back to that question. Why were they doubtful? So y'all, is everybody, is everybody with me? Is this helping y'all? Okay. All right. So, um, we don't have a comprehensive account of every coronation of a Caesar. But we do have a few. And one of the best records we have is of the coronation of Emperor Nero. And from the records that we do have, one could conclude that the typical coronation had nine steps. All right. And, and if you take the list of the nine steps and you read through Mark's. Yeah.
So, 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 so when we say coronation, we're talking about the crowning of, of a king? Is that what we, is that, is that what coronation means?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, brother Fred. Uh, coronation is a ceremony or act of crowning a king or other sovereign. A coronation is a ceremony or act of crowning a king or other sovereign.
Okay. And so, and so what you're about to tell us and teach us is how the Romans, uh, coordinated a king. And in the Roman culture, a Caesar was king. Is that, am I, am I correct? And you're going to show us how a
You're kind of freezing up there, brother Fred.
So, 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 so you're going to show us how the Roman, uh, coronation process paralleled what Jesus, uh, went through in the gospel of Mark?
Yes, yes. Bingo. And that's exactly what, and, and I'm going to show you, cause Mark uses the steps of Nero's coronation. And it's juxtaposed to, it's, it's put side by side with, uh, the way Christ was treated as he was led to his crucifixion. And in the final analysis, what it's going to show you is that, uh, Christ's crucifixion is really the coronation of a king, the king of, uh, you know, the king of, of the world, our, our Christ, our king. It's his, it's a coronation. So, uh, let's go to,
And so, so John, what you just shared with me has got me excited about this whole process. I just wanted to get that in real quick. I mean, this is excited now because I got the setting. I got what's about, what you about to tell us. And now I'm excited about looking through these nine steps. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that encouragement, brother Fred. Uh, I'm going to carry on. Okay. Let's go to the, uh, and, and what's really beautiful of these nine steps correspond to verses in Mark's gospel. Okay. So let's go with step one. The Praetorian Guard gathers to hail Caesar as Lord and God. Now, the Praetorian Guard was a, uh, private, um, uh, it was the bodyguard for, for Nero. It was kind of like Hitler's SS troops. They were there to protect the, uh, to protect Nero and a Praetorian Guard was a cohort or a number of about six hundred. So you've got about six hundred there at the, um, uh, so in fact, uh, if somebody will turn your bibles to, uh, Mark fifteen, Mark chapter fifteen, and follow along with me in this, okay? It'll mean much more to you if you kind of follow along. So we turn to Mark, uh, fifteen. And we go to verse sixteen. Can somebody read that for us?
Mark fifteen.
Verse sixteen.
And the soldiers took him away until the pate. That is, well, I can't pronounce that.
Uh, Praetorian.
Praetorian. And they called together the whole Roman.
Cohort.
Cohort.
How many in a cohort? How many in a cohort?
I think you say six hundred.
There you go. All right. So that's, that was, uh, that was the first step to getting, uh, Caesar coronated. All right. Now let's look at the second step of the coronation of, of Nero. Uh, royal robes, a wreath crown, and a scepter are placed on Caesar. So somebody read verse, uh, seventeen and eighteen.
I got it. He said seventeen, eighteen.
Yeah. I'm Lola.
Okay.
You know, uh, that's what in, in, um, I would say religious circles, that's what they're calling now. The thing when they bring pastors and leaders together for a year or two and they have a certain, um, fellowship, certain teachings, certain strategies, uh, they call them cohorts.
Yeah, well. Well, it's, uh, well, I guess the cohort could, you know, could meet a lot of other, you know, it just means a group of people getting together, I guess, but in, uh,
We're, we're, I'm just saying, we're, we're still adopting empire into what should be kingdom.
Hmm, hmm, yeah. Okay, uh, verse seventeen and eighteen, Omala.
All right, uh, verse seventeen, "And they clothed him in a purple cloak and twisting together a crown of thorns, they put it on him. And they began to salute him, hail, hail, king of the Jews."
All right, read verse nineteen too, please.
Okay. "And they were striking his hair with a reed and spitting on him and kneeling down in homage to him."
Okay. Thank you, Omala. So what happened? They, they placed on him, uh, you know, purple was the color of royalty. So here they, I mean, these guys were just so mocking Jesus. And they said, okay, if you're the king of the Jews, then we're going to give you a coronation. So the Praetorian Guard gathered. And, you know, they weren't hailing him. They were just mocking him, you know, slapping him around. Then step two, they put a purple robe on him like he was a king. Uh, they wove a wreath of thorns. Now, if any of you ever studied the crucifixion, uh, this wasn't a wreath made out of, uh, out of blueberry vines. I mean, you know, blueberries got some pretty wicked stickers on them, but uh, this was a particular thorn that, uh, grew in the Middle East and it was, I mean, they were vicious, long vicious thorns. So they, uh, made a wreath, put it on his head. And a scepter are, are placed on Caesar. Well, you know, that's what the, the reed, you know, that they were hitting him over the head with, that was a scepter. So he had, uh, purple robe. He had a wreath of, uh, he had a crown wreath on and then, uh, they were beating him with a scepter. So that was, uh, step two. So if we go to step three of the coronation, they lead Caesar through a procession lined with incense altar. So, uh, read, uh, fifteen, twenty, Omala, if you would.
All right. So verse twenty-six, "And when they had mocked him, they stripped him of the purple cloak and put his own clothes on him, and they led him out to crucify him."
They led him out to crucify him. Okay. So there he goes. They led him out. Now we go to step four. Caesar is followed. Now this is, if, if Nero were, if they were taking Nero down to, to make him Caesar or Lord and God, Caesar is followed by the sacrifice. And in Nero's case, it would be a bull. And Nero carries the instrument of death, which would be a sword. Or I forgot, they don't, they didn't call it a sword. There's another term for it, but it was an instrument of death. So Caesar's followed by the sacrifice. And he carries the instrument of death. So read, uh, verse twenty-one.
Okay. It says, "And they compelled the pastor by Simon of Syrene, who was coming in from the country, the fathers Alexander and Rufus, to carry his cross."
Okay. So, uh, stop and think a minute. Uh, what's the instrument of death in this situation?
The cross.
Uh, yeah, the cross.
The cross, exactly. So Caesar's followed by the sacrifice. Who's the sacrifice?
Would it be Jesus?
Yes, yes. So, uh, Caesar's followed by the, okay, Caesar's, okay.
It, the, the sacrifice would be Jesus.
Got it.
And Simon of Syrene is carrying the instrument of death. Are y'all starting to get this picture here? Is this? Is it coming together for y'all? Okay. I mean, just tell me if I'm missing some or if I'm off base, but, um, the more I look at this, the more excited I get. So they arrive at, uh, step number five is they arrive at, uh, Capitoline, that's C.A.P.I.T.O.L.I.N.E. Hill. Capitoline Hill. And let me tell you what that means. That's, uh, Capitoline Hill, and let me tell you what that means, that's uh, Capitoline Hill, let me find that note I made on, and. Uh, Capitoline Hill is, is like uh, what we would refer to as Capitol, it's a parallel to Capitol Hill. And this is a place where the ancient temple of Jupiter stood. And you need to understand that Jupiter was the main god of the Romans, now they had a, a pantheon of gods, you know, they had Mercury, they had all kinds, but they uh, just like the Greeks, except they had different names for them. Virtually the same uh gods or demons, but they brought different names, but Jupiter was the main, was the main guy in Rome. So, Capitoline Hill was the place where the ancient temple of Jupiter stood. And it was built on one of the seven hills, you know, you've heard of the, you know, Rome, a city built on seven hills? You know, that's uh, Ju, and this one stood on one of the seven hills, and um, this was the final destination of each imperial triumph, okay? So, you know, let's stop and think a minute, alright, we've had the uh, we've had the triumphal entry, you know? Uh, now we've gone to the Praetorian Guard, and uh, you know, they all hailed Caesar's Lord and God. They put the royal robes on him, a wreath crown, gave him a scepter, they led him through the procession lined with incense altars. Uh, Caesar's followed by the sacrifice, and he carries the instrument of death. Now they've arrived at Capitoline Hill, alright, so does everybody understand what, what Capitoline Hill is? Okay, alright, well, uh, it was also called like Head Hill, alright? So, what's really interesting is Golgotha, uh, and many of you know that in the scripture, it is called Place of the Skull, or Head Hill. So it has a very strong parallel to Capitoline Hill, where the ancient temple of Jupiter stood. And uh, the Place of the Skull, they uh, when they were doing, they called it Place of the Skull, because back in the day, they found a skull there or something, that's why they called it Place of the Skull. But that's, I digress, okay, so they arrive at Capitoline Hill, and Caesar is offered wine mixed with myrrh. But he refuses it, pouring it out, so somebody read uh verses fifteen through twenty-three, I mean fifteen, twenty-two through twenty-three.
I got it, it's twenty-two, okay, and they brought him to the place called Golgotha, which means Place of a Skull. And they offered him wine mixed with myrrh, but he did not take it.
Okay, alright, so uh, wine mixed with myrrh was an expensive delicacy in the Roman world. Uh, and there is no known custom of Romans providing it to a condemned prisoner, especially one that's facing the humiliation of crucifixion, you know, I mean, that was most humiliating death that they could force on somebody. So, um, the account of this spice drink is being offered to Jesus, and he refuses, and it emphasizes the mocking of Jesus as king of the Jews by the soldiers. And this, guys, this detail adds a noteworthy connection between Jesus's procession and the Roman triumph, you know, which is, you know, the coronation of Nero, so you see how these things are paralleling each other, you see where Mark's going with this? Are y'all getting as excited as I do about this? Uh, maybe y'all, y'all don't heard it before, but anyway, uh, so what happens next? Okay, so Caesar pours out, pours out the wine mixed with myrrh, alright, uh, number s, the sixth step is the bull is killed. Caesar pronounced death or life on a host of prisoners, demonstrating that he has the power of life and death. Now remember, Caesar is Lord and Savior, that's what he calls himself, you know, and if you don't bow to uh, uh, Caesar Curios, you know, which is why all these Christians were martyred, they would say Christ Curios, I mean, Christians were some of the best citizens Rome ever had. They followed the laws, they paid their taxes, they, you know, didn't litter, they just, you know, did all the right things, but they would not consider, they would not call Caesar Lord and Savior. That was reserved for Christ, okay, so the bull is killed, alright, let's look at uh, uh, verse twenty-four in chapter fifteen.
Okay, it says, and they crucified him and divided his garments among them, casting lots for them, to decide what each should take.
Okay, so uh, the sixth step, the bull is killed, now Christ is crucified, alright? When it says Caesar pronounced death or life on a host of prisoners, what Caesar did, remember, when he was going to Capitoline Hill, he was accompanied by a procession of uh captured prisoners, uh, you know, some of his victories from war and that kind of stuff, and he would just summarily have somebody killed, I mean, he would just look at them and say, death to you, life to you, just like in the uh, uh, Roman Colosseum. You know, if he said thumbs up, you lived, if he said thumbs down, uh, that was it, you know, you, they cut your head off, so.
Hey John?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask you a question?
Please.
Okay, when he say kill him, how did they kill him?
Had they killed the prisoners?
Yeah, how would they kill?
They were just killed with uh, with the instrument of death, which was something similar to a sword, they just kill them. I'm talking about the ones that were accompanying Nero, you know, he took out several with him, just because he had to show the power, he had the power of life and death, so he took people along to kill. Yeah, I mean, he, that was his uh, that was his sacrifices, I guess, was the, his people he took along and, and pronounced death or life on a host of prisoners, and then of course, the bull, which was his sacrifice, you know, they sacrificed the bull. So, now we go to the next step, where the emperor, or Caesar, ascends the steps of the temple with the high priest on his right and the commander on his left, so let's look at uh, chapter fifteen, verse twenty-seven, someone want to read that?
Hey John?
Yes.
That would be a Roman high priest, correct?
Yes, oh yes.
And you know, that just uh, until I found that out and really began to pay attention, anytime I saw high priests, I'd automatically flip over and think Jewish high priests, but the Romans had a high priest also that rode with them.
That's right, they had uh, you know, uh, like the high priest to Jupiter, I mean, they worship and, and sacrifice to Jupiter. And another interesting side note, uh, in Augustine's City of God, you know, Augustine, the bishop of Hippo, uh, he explains that, you know, the Christians were blamed for the fall of Rome, because they would not worship their gods, so there you go. You know, that's, yeah, so they had their high priest, they had all that, so uh, thank you Sue, thanks for mentioning that. Alright, so the emperor ascends the steps of the temple with the high priest on his right, and his commander on his left, alright, somebody read uh fifteen twenty-seven.
And they crucified robbers with him, one on his right, and one on his left.
There you go, damn, these guys are really following the pattern, I mean, they know, they know how coronations checked out, I mean, this, I mean, so just imagine yourself uh, reading this gospel, and you're a Roman citizen, and we're talking about the coronation of a king. You know, they certainly know what Nero, you know, here's Nero, and this is how he's coronated now, is you're picking up snippets, I mean, just put yourself back in that culture. You know, uh, can y'all see this coming together?
Yeah, I, we, I'm with you, John.
Alright, alright, everybody still out there, okay.
Yeah, 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 I'm picking that up, uh, so I'm trying to see, John, if I was a Roman in that culture, and I was watching this happen to this man called Jesus, and I'd be wondering like, wait a minute, we're taking him through the same process that we would take someone through who was being seated as the king? And I would be a little confused, and I'd be wondering, but wait a minute, isn't he a Jew? Why are they doing this, and why are we doing this like that? Would I be thinking right?
Well, uh, not just, uh, you may not have known it when you were witnessing it, but as you began to read the gospel, see, that's why he parallels this thing with the uh coronation of Nero, is as you're uh, as you're a Roman, and you're beginning to read and study this gospel, you're going, hmm, man, this, this really sounds familiar here, and uh, cause I'm not sure how many of them would, uh, however, yes, there are those that would, uh, the, the Roman soldiers certainly seemed to know what they were doing, I mean, they were having a field day, they were having a lot of fun with this uh, mockery and just saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna coordinate this Jew as king, but except, you know, we ain't taking him to Capitoline Hill, and we're not giving him, you know, the keys to the kingdom, he's, you know, we're gonna take him up there and crucify him, so uh.
So, so, so John, so John, so, so the Romans, they would say so just as a joke?
Yes, wouldn't you say that Sue, I mean, this far in, what do you think?
Yeah, that, I, I think we on to it, because they, they would have seen this in their culture, and, and it looks like there's a mockery going on. Um, and uh, because of all the things they did, you know? Uh, they, they even put on, they even put a thing on this cross saying, king of the Jews, right?
Right.
And so, so yes, and so, uh, yeah, I think it, I think it'd be safe to say something's going on here that they know about, and they're making a spoof? Is that, is that the right word, is that what a movie does, when they make a mockery of another movie or something, they call it a spoof?
A spoof, yes, that's, I know, that's exactly right, it's a spoof. It's a spoof on a coronation, is what it is, and then, so um, so he's got the high priest on his right, and commander on his left, somebody read that uh, verse twenty-seven again?
Twenty-seven, yeah. And they crucified the two robbers, one on his right, and one on his left.
Okay, alright, so uh, then, step eight, Caesar is acclaimed Lord and God, as the people sing his praises. Curios, a person exercising absolute ownership rights, he's Lord, uh, used supremely of Christ, however, in this case, it's Caesar Curios. He's acclaimed Lord and God, as the people sing his praises, so if we look at, uh, somebody read fifteen, twenty-nine through thirty-two.
Okay, and those passing by were hurling abuse at him, wagging their heads and saying, ha, you who are going to destroy the temple and rebuild it in three days, save yourself, come down from the cross. In the same day, in the same way, the chief priest also alone with the scribes was mocking him, among them and saying, he saved others, saved himself. Let this Christ the King of Israel not come down from the cross, so that we may see and believe. And those who were crucified with him was casting the same insult at him.
Okay, so there you have it, you know, uh, again, it's more to the spoof, they certainly weren't singing praises, but they were sure shouting stuff at him, I mean, here's a man hanging on a cross, I mean, what, oh, you know, what always got me in this verse was uh, even the ones who were crucified with him were, were insulting him. I mean, you know, here you are hanging on a cross up there too, and you're insulting this, you know, the, our Lord and our King, I mean, isn't that, there you go, Sue, I mean, it's just empire so deeply embedded, that I mean, even to the death, these people are uh, you know, of course, these guys on the cross were probably wanting him to come down and get them off the cross too, I'm sure that's what they had in the back of their minds. Okay, so let's look at uh, the last step, they wait for a sign from the heavens, oh, this is huge. In Nero's coronation, according to history, there was an eclipse, so uh, they wait for a sign, you know, after they, after Caesar's acclaimed Lord and God, the people sing his praises, they wait for a sign from the heavens, and uh, there was a uh, eclipse when Nero uh came his, but, but then if you notice in verse thirty-two, where they said, let this Christ the King of Israel. So, you know, these were the scribes and the Pharisees, you know, and the priests of, of Israel saying, let this Christ the King of Israel. So, you know, they were uh, probably very surprised, when, uh, read uh verse thirty-three.
And, and when the sixth hour had come, darkness fell over the whole land until the ninth hour.
Okay.
And then, okay.
So the uh, so that was from noon till three PM, darkness fell over the whole land. Darkness fell over the whole land, now, wouldn't you say that was an astronomical perturbation? How you like that word, Fred? But anyway, that was just uh, that, there was a sign, uh, there was a sign from heavens, so that was the ninth step. Okay, so, Mark, uh, just to wrap it up, guys, you know, Mark tells the crucifixion as if it was Jesus's coronation. Mark's trying to make the case that Jesus's crucifixion was not a moment of defeat, it was the greatest moment of triumph. And it's stunning uh, to attempt to communicate to a bunch of Romans, and, you know, Mark is trying to tell them that the world they live in is completely backwards, you know, they're, that's empire, that's backwards, you know, it's completely backwards and upside down. He's saying that the way of empire doesn't actually bring true peace, but, and weakness, and the laying down of his life, Jesus showed empire to be the farce, you know, that it is. And then uh, and, and then just to make a, a quick point, uh, well, let me stop there, is there any questions or comments?
Yeah, uh, what did that thief say to him, can somebody read that? And then I wanna know, I wonder what kind of thievery did he do to put him on that cross? That had to be, and I'm wondering what that word thief really means, because there's some, some that think these two guys might have been zealots. And, and I'm wondering too, if, if empire is saying to them, because the Romans know that the Jews' goal is overthrow them, that's no secret, because they had a garrison always at the bound, at the bottom of the uh, um, what mountain did he come down off of on his, on his day uh? Uh, Mount Olivet, right, that he came down off of? Okay, they always had a garrison uh, military at the bottom of that hill, because. Okay, they always had a garrison, uh, military at the bottom of that hill because. This is not the first time somebody's coming claiming to be the Messiah, and there's bloodshed because they know. That when that Messiah comes, the warrior Messiah, they know, they know that they're gonna have to fight against the Jewish people. So I'm wondering if the, if these guys was zealous on the cross, right? And, 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 and maybe they're showing the people. When you're, when, when that warrior king who you think is gonna come. If you're one of his followers, or if you're gonna be trying to go against us. You're gonna get this too, I'm wondering if they put that up there as, as a, for the people, and also. Uh. Do we, do we see empire and kingdom being played out on the cross, in other words? One says, if you are the true king. Get off this cross and bring me with you off of it, right?
Right.
And then the other one said. He is the king, uh, will you remember me when you come into your kingdom? So I'm wondering, I'm wondering if that's a play on empire and kingdom right there at the cross, one on one side, one on the other.
Ooh, yeah, that's, uh. I'll have to, uh, make a note there and dig into that.
Just a thought.
I don't think the scriptures tell us what the two guys were put up there for, there may be some, uh. Uh, extra biblical stuff that tells us, but, but we do know the crucifixion was. Reserved for the worst, you know, the worst offenses, and you're right. Sue, uh, any crime against. The empire. You know, quote unquote, was usually punishable by. Uh, crucifixion, and these guys could easily have been zealots who, you know, loved to kill Romans and, you know, of, of Romans in. Leadership positions, so. Uh, anybody, anybody want to comment on that, anybody have any questions?
We know it's a capital offense to, to, to bring bloodshed to any Roman official, anybody like that. And, um, one reason Jesus healed that guy's year in the garden. Uh, there'd be no evidence for any capital offense there. Uh, because that was the high priest, uh, servant or whatever, and so. I'm just wondering, uh, if these guys, like you said, had brought bloodshed upon one of the Roman officials. Or something, I don't know, but just something to think about, that's all, I'm just putting it out there to think about in the context. Of what we're looking at and why those guys might be up there by Jesus.
Yep. That's, uh, that's, that's something for us to ponder today. What would we, would we have been insulting him, or would we have been asking him to take us into the kingdom with him, that's a, that's a. You know, praise God that, uh, he's called us, you know, he's called us to be part of his kingdom, praise God. I mean, he could have been like that one that was insulting him, I mean, you know, you know where he went. So let's go to, uh. Alright, so, uh, in closing, I'll, you know, uh, there's the ending, you know, if you look in your Bible. Uh, there's a note that says, you know, Mark sixteen nine through twenty. Now that is the, uh, last chapter in the book of Mark, and it's in brackets. And, uh. What that, uh, what the brackets mean is that that particular, uh. Those particular verses were not in the original manuscripts. Uh, and it's thought by, uh, some scholars that. Mark's, um. Gospel ended so abruptly that later on, somebody picked up and said, hey, we need to put an ending on this because. Uh, I mean, who would really end his gospel with women running away and trembling and afraid? So they wanted to, you know, clean it up a little bit, but you have to understand, you know, Mark would, would have done that. Because stop and think, put yourself in the, put yourself in the, uh, in a Roman citizens. Situation. You know, any Roman who reads Mark's gospel and accepts it. Is gonna feel just like those women, and if they affirm the truth that Jesus is a better king. Then their Roman life is, they know it is over, because what happens if you don't acknowledge Caesar as Lord and God? You're gonna, you're gonna be considered a, if you're a Christian, you're a marked person, you know, you're, you're subject to. All kinds of terrible things that they did to the Christians back in then, and then, of course, Nero was one of the worst because he. Uh, he took great pleasure in, it was one of the greatest persecutions of the Christian, that's what called the dispersion, that's why the gospel spread so rapidly. Uh, during those times, because they all, you know, they were afraid of getting killed, and they left Rome, but they took the gospel with them. So. If you're a Roman, you have much to fear. And so much like the story of the prodigal son, you know, Mark leaves the ending open-ended. And unwritten, you know, and it invites the Roman reader to consider what they believe to be the, uh, truest. True about the world. And what brings real peace? You know, is it Pax Romana? Or is it? Uh, the Kingdom of God? And this is our great challenge as American readers. Really, do we really want to choose the, uh? Do we really want to choose the triumph of Jesus? You know, it runs counter to everything. That our worldview says is power. Yet, Mark confronts our worldview, and he invites us to consider it, you know, as we possibly. Sit trembling and afraid of the implication, you know, whether or not we'd like to believe the gospel. Of a better kingdom, I'm gonna tell you something, guys, if you really stop and think, uh, I've got a brother. Center in Louisiana that, uh, in fact, I talked to him this morning, and. I was just wanting to learn more about him, and, uh. You know, and he had been incarcerated at one time, but before that, he was, uh, he, you know, he was empire, I mean, he was a. Uh, had a lot of accolades, a prominent kind of guy. And, uh, what's really. Drawn me to him is his, the way he. Uh, there's so much he could do, but you know what he does, he just, he serves Christ, he goes out and then if people need something, he just. Takes care of it, and I, and I was just, uh, and I'm telling you, you know, when you stop and consider that, I mean, would you do that? I mean, this man was, uh. Weeping because he gave, uh, early in the morning, he was taking some people to work. And, uh, you know, that he's trying to disciple and teach them how to handle finances and all that, and, uh, he sees a. A lady strung out on crack or something, walking down the street with no shirt on, just a pair of gym shorts, barefooted, it was cold, he stops. Gives her his shirt, and two days later, he's weeping because he didn't do more. I mean, man, you think that doesn't convict you? But anyway, that's just me carrying on, that, that's all I got, guys, I mean, I hope, uh. If you have any questions or, you know, y'all talk to me, we've, we're right here at twelve o'clock, it's, uh. Easter Sunday, I've enjoyed spending this time with you all this morning, but, uh, please, if there's questions or. Something I didn't make clear, I'll be happy to. Listen. And let's see Patrick.
I, I think you did a great job, John, you know, the, uh, the understanding that. I'm trying to understand what the difference between empire and kingdom. Uh, we, 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 I hear that a lot. So what is the difference between empire and kingdom?
Sue, you wanna jump in on that?
I think, I think John. Talked about it when you give, like, you give the four pillars of empire, basically with, uh. That kind of Alexander put in place, wasn't it, John, Alexander the Great said, if you can do these four things. You don't need a sword to take the world, and that was those four things, education, athletics. Um, entertainment and healthcare. If you can control those four things, you do not need a bullet to take the world. And we saw with Corona, COVID, there was Corona, COVID. We saw that one virus, one little virus can shut the world down. And I was talking to somebody the other day, and they're like, I don't know if that'll happen again, I said, you better be ready for it to happen again, because. If one superpower got it, every superpower got it cooking somewhere and sitting on a shelf. And all it takes a drone and you shut the world down again, so, uh, but that's empire, that's about control. Uh, kingdom, uh, is about righteousness, which is generosity. Hospitality, justice and mercy. Zedekiah.
It's a big difference, I see what you're saying, yeah, one, one is controlled and the other is totally different.
Yeah.
Kingdom, yeah.
Yeah, you would think, you would think empire, you would think by those terms, kingdom is weak and empire is strong. But those things is what broke down the strongest empire the world has known, which is the Roman Empire. And then, and like Brother John said, Christianity broke down the Roman Empire. And, uh, without the sword.
And you know, we, we think that, uh. You know, when you look back on the. Roman Empire before, uh, Christ turned the world on his head. Uh, I mean, you know, uh, now Rome, you know, if you were more, um. You know, if you were in the power structure of Rome and you're a woman, you, sometimes you were allowed to have an education and stuff, but. If you were, uh, but by and large, you know, I think, uh, I mean, just an incredible number of people. In Roman Empire were slaves, I mean, they were, uh. I mean, it was just, it was pretty wild, I guess it was like the South during the Civil War, you know, you had, uh. You know, millions of slaves and, you know, not so many plantation owners, but yet, they were able to use that. Uh, uh, structure in order to oppress people, well, once Christ came along, I mean, suddenly. Uh. You know, the, uh, orgies and the, uh. Sexual promiscuity and, and all kinds of things. Began to change because people began to watch these Christians, and this was not just, uh. Uh, you know, and it took a while, but if people began to watch that way of life, and they realized, and it became, uh. You know, a better way, I mean. And, and it really wasn't until, and Sue probably hit me on this one too, but you know, really, until Constantine made Christianity. Uh, the religion, and he gave him a four thousand seat. Um, sanctuary, started having church in, that's when things changed, because all of a sudden, it's almost like the. The church structure became empire instead of, you know, that house-to-house meeting, when I think about, uh. Sue going over to China and having to, you know, not even look at a camera over there, you know, they have facial recognition and stuff. And he's got his disciples that take him through these underground churches, you know, at a great risk to his. To their lives and certainly soup, you know, if they caught him over there, they have no problem locking soup up and preaching the gospel, but. You know, but man, the gospel just spreads like wildfire. And here, here we are, you know, we're, we're a little bashful to even tell our. People that we're very close to about Christ, and. Uh. That's why. That's why everything is about the Great Commission, you know, and that's why I have such great admiration for. Soup, you know, a hundred thirty-nine countries, uh, he and Linda, I mean. You know, when I looked, you know, soup, I went to hear him speak last week, and, uh, and I'm not. Try to build soup up, I'm just showing you what one man can do, and the, uh. The, and all he did was be faithful, he was obedient, and it brings great conviction on me, I can tell you, so. Um. All I gotta say is, you know, praise God and Christ is risen, our Savior. He's risen and he's forever glorified. And that's all I got.
Great job today, that was excellent, thank you.
Uh, somebody want to close us out with prayer?
I'll do it, John, I'll do.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir. No, sir, I just say, great lesson today, brother John, appreciate you, man.
Thank you, appreciate you guys, yeah, y'all, y'all make it.
Yeah. Lord Jesus, we thank you for. This teaching today. Uh, we thank you for opening our eyes to understanding that. This whole process of the death, burial and the resurrection of, the resurrection of Jesus. Was a real victory for believers and those that accepted and acknowledged Christ as King. We thank you for our leader, Pastor Keusi, and we cover him and his wife and his family right now in Jesus's name, wherever they are. And I thank you for every person on here, we thank you for our teacher today, and we thank you for Mr. and Ms. Campbell. And we just thank you for the, the light and the image that we have been set before us. Of what disciple-making looks like, and I pray that we would take this to heart and walk out this Great Commission. And be disciple-makers everywhere we go, it's in the name of Jesus, I pray, and thank you, Lord, amen.
Amen, my brother, amen. Great job, John.
Alright, thank you, Will. Doc Fred, appreciate y'all, everybody here, thank y'all, love, love you.
Be safe, everybody.